Alright, so we're gonna go right into our policy review with Dr. B.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Daniels. So, we have a couple of policies that we would like to present and discuss with the board today. I know Mr. Gaylord had a conversation with Board Member Kowski around these policies, so I want to thank Mr. Gaylord and Board Member Kowski to help me prep these policies. And so, the first policy that we want to present to the board for a first reading is the policy, kind of a policy update and revision around the use of privately owned technology devices by students for the first reading. And so, as you know, there is a conversation with the state as it relates to Governor Lamont's request for the Commissioner of Education to introduce a model policy for school districts in the state of Connecticut to ban smartphones and cellphones in our public schools in the state of Connecticut. However, we, as a district, started to have this conversation over the summer. We have a task force where we started to investigate, research to our cellphone policy as well as the implementation of pouches in your, in the packets that we sent to you and the board. We started to research on the use of Yonder, which is a company that has developed cellphone pouches that limit the access of cellphone use during the instructional day. That is being used in some school districts in Connecticut, but also school districts throughout the country. We have vetted some of these districts throughout the country, interviewed superintendent's principals and their experiences, pros and cons, as well as also had discussions among IT individuals in the districts, our administrators, as well as others. Some board member, a board member is involved in the conversations as it relates to kind of how would this actually best meet the needs of the students. We also looked at position papers and research papers. As you know, I've also shared with the board some of the latest research as it relates to kind of the impact cellphone, as well as also screen time usage has on the cognitive development and as well as the social development it has on our youth. Most recently, the Surgeon General sent out a research paper as it relates to social isolation and the impact it is having on our youth as it relates to kind of their developmental growth and the impact it's having on our students. As well as also studies that, that most recently has come out of Harvard University, as well as the Association of Pediatric Doctors, connecting actually also the increase of cellphone use and linking it also to cognitive development, as well as also obesity. And so, we have shared this among our stakeholders, our task force. And from a superintendent perspective, it weighs heavy on me from a moral and ethical perspective that we have to address this matter. As, as many of us around the table who work in the schools every day also see the lived experience of how the excessive use of cellphones and also increased time on some types of devices has really become a challenge for many of our students, but also our educators, who are sometimes trying to navigate the day-to-day work and trying to create engaging learning environments. And so, the, the policy that is presented here is inclusive of introducing also these magnetic pouches. We don't call it specifically the name of the organization, but a, a solution such as a magnetic device. And so, some of the things around the Yonder pouches, well, we've talked about that because it's on the, I can talk specifically about Yonder pouches more later. But the policy presented is inclusive of also introducing the Yonder or the magnetic pouches as part of the preventative measure in the policy.
If this policy needs to outline, you know, what would, what be a result of the student? You know, if they have a, if they have, like, for instance, if I have an elementary student and that student has their phone out and visible, do we need to, are there, are those in the regs? If you have to create regs, then I'm assuming?
That is correct.
Okay.
The regs will be the outline, specifically the grade level.
We have a question. I have a lot of questions anyway, but it says wearable technologies. So, are students, do we have an Apple Watch required to take that off and put it away?
That's correct.
Okay. Speaker, I'll give the chair. Are they gonna do this in home room or their first class for every class?
So, that's a great, yes. That's a great question. So, if, if we go the route with the Yonder, so if, if it's the middle school, so the plan is the pouches will be introduced in the middle school and the high school level. So, from, students will have to actually put their cellphone or device into the pouch as they enter the building. And there is a, a magnet where they'll tap in the pouch and it seals the phone securely into the pouch. And the student will have the pouch during the day in their bag or on, 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 with their belongings. And then, at the end of the day, they will tap the pouch and it will release the phone from their pouch.
Where's the tap?
So, it's actually a magnet. And so, because already we have kind of a system where students already have to tap in with scholarship at the beginning of the day, are, what we are thinking is that the magnet will be right there by that machine. So, as they tap in for attendance purposes, they would also tap in with the pouch at the same time. We also will have kind of a floating magnet. So, if a teacher wants to, let's say, use the phones for instructional purposes, it allows the teacher also to sign out a, one of those magnets and actually allow students to, you know, allow the pouches to open if they want to use it for instructional purposes. But the purpose of this is actually to decrease the amount of time that they will have access to their phone during the instruction of that.
So, isn't that kind of defeating the purpose, the premise of what, why we were doing this? That we were trying to get away from the use of technology during that timeframe on school day? But then we're saying, lock your, lock your phone, but you can come to my class and you can access as much as you'd like, or it, or in accordance to what I'm doing in my classroom. So, I kind of feel like we're contradicting, conflicting.
So, I, 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 I'm just presenting.
For health reasons, you know, that, that's the premise, that we're going around more of health reasons.
Yeah.
Then.
So, I, I, again, what I'm, I'm presenting is what the product allows. So, if, if it is, again, I, I agree with, with, with that, Board Member Daniels. But as you know, when we presentation, the, the, the system allows for that flexibility. I just wanted to, to allow that, that. Because I don't want to, I don't want it to seem that we're doing this in a punitive way. I want to make sure that the community standard, we are, the, what, the reason we're doing this is because we are addressing a crisis that's been, that we are seeing nationally.
Marco, if you could, I can't remember the person's name, Ally and her husband. They did a wonderful program with cellphones for the chorus group. And interacting to that point, by the way, but it was terrific use of, you remember that?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that performance was written for use of cellphones.
Yes, it was, it, I don't know if you have a taste. It was just spectacular, great, very creative. I have another question. What, what has, what has been thought or has this been thought about? Where the student comes to school and says, I don't have a phone? Or they have it turned off in their backpack and say they don't have a phone? Unless there's some kind of, you know, a real security issue. As far as I know, you can't search their backpack. So, what happens with that?
So, you know, that's a great question, right? So, if, 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 I mean, the policy is clear, right? No devices. So, if, if a student is following the policy and doesn't show a phone, right? We won't know there's a phone there, right? But the minute the student shows a phone and is violating the policy, there is consequences, whether they have to automatically put it in their pouch, or the phone is going to be confiscated. And a parent or guardian will need to pick up the phone. What we're trying to prevent is all of that from happening, right? So, if a student is going to comply with the policy and leave a phone at home, or not, or, or not, you know,
Turn it off and leave it away.
Turn it off and not take it out, then, then there are hearings still to the policy.
Okay.
Let me go back again, please, to the beginning of the day. So, they are going to walk in, they're going to clock in, so to speak, for attendance. They're also going to clock in, they're going to have their pouches with them when they go home and then bring them back. And if they come to school without the pouch, we'll want to be provided for them.
So, we, we, we don't want that, right? So, they, just like they have to have their ID every day. There is, it, it will be the responsibility of the student to also carry their pouches, just like they do with the ID. The, the, what, the pouches are, are also, ha, the pouches also have the capability to carry the IDs together. So, that's a good thing, so that, that they can actually carry both things together. So, they already know that they have to carry their IDs to get it, just to, for attendance purposes. So, they have the pouch and the ID together. You know, they'll have both together, because they already know they have to bring their ID. So, hopefully, they'll have out an ID.
And if lost, they'll have to purchase another.
That is correct. Just like now, they have to purchase an ID to replace it. And so, and now, again, I don't want to jump the agenda that you're, but I can talk about the power going to phase it in when we get to the Yonder agenda.
Any other questions? No, but I'd like to say that there's been a lot of positive feedback about this. I have another question. Since a lot of the students now just take a picture of whatever the homework assignment is, so how do we, you know, you, you have kids that have been doing this for three, four years? And that's how they, they don't keep an agenda anymore. So, do we provide them with an agenda? Or is there a requirement that teachers post whatever the assignment is daily in Power School?
So, yes, so we, we will use, we would, we would have to maximize their Google Classrooms as well as Power School for their assignments.
Okay. That's great. Yeah, it's good if you can, like, that was thinking of things that might come over, you know, that's good, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Speaker, don't they also have homework assignment books? Are those still provided, like, where they get something where they can write their assignments? Do they, because that was done a couple of years ago, some teachers did it.
Well, my kids were in school, which is a few years back. They use Google Classroom for everything.
Well, we used to distribute them.
Yeah. And they, and would, but would you consider reissuing them? As far as, you know, when we're talking about, also talking about writing and getting away from, you know, as much Chromebook use as we were?
Absolutely. I, you know, we can make that available for students.
Teaching students how to manage time, not just that a homework assignment is due on the 22nd, but what do they have to do on the 15th, the 16th, the 18th? And to prepare for whatever assignment or test or quiz on the 22nd is really an invaluable skill.
So, I think, I, to piggyback off of that, as you know, this is a perfect opportunity also to talk about that. When, it is not just about cellphone, right? This is also, we, working with Dr. McCann, we were very intentional also of working with the, you know, the department heads of also reducing screen time, right? So, we increased more, we, we've invested this year on introducing more manipulatives, more texts. We are introducing cursive at the third grade level. We are, we, you know, I just reviewed, and they did a phenomenal job. You know, a, an exemplar of the K, K, K4 schedule, starting the day with SCL and ending the day with purpose of play. And so, we have the movement breaks as, as now is required by statute and, and literacy blocks. And so, it, it, it was so exciting to see that and, and getting students to really starting to, to, you know, have access to, to rich and, and culturally responsive texts and print. They, they now have these, these huge print machines that they're gonna be printing, these kids, these teachers and students in every school through the new curriculum. And not just in the elementary, but also in the middle school, as well in the high school. And so, we are working to go, you know, and I don't want to say going back to an old school way, but we're going back to really, again, what the research is saying on really making sure students have access to print material, right? Document-based questioning, going, doing those type of, of, you know, of, of strategies and making sure that students are really being prepared for the next level, grade level, but also the next level of their educational or post-secondary journey.
And Dr. Lee is referring to a prep range environment, right? And that serves all kids, our, our ML learners, they'll have visual posters. Our specialist students who need modifications, like, this is really a, a best practice strategy that serves everyone and gives them access. Walls that teach.
Well, when you have, when you're outlining, it's more deliberate, right? So, when you're working on these computers, these kids aren't deliberate in their thought process. They're just doing without thought, really, you know, it's just wrote for them. But when you're learning how to outline and read deliberatively and outline and question and learning how to write questions to prepare for upcoming assessments, that I think it's critical to have the ability to do that. Plus, the learning, right, between your hands and your eyes and your brain is a lot different than a computer lip.
And I, I, but I want to also make, to make that connection, right? Why this policy is important, because it also supports the literacy strategy we're trying to do in the subjects as well.
Any other questions or comments on this? Very good.
We still taking questions?
On this, yes.
For Yonder?
Well, can we talk about that afterward? Because we want to get to all the policies, because Deb's got to leave, so I want to have us go through.
I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to clarify where we are at.
Yeah, no, no, I was asking questions around this policy. So, are we, want to move on?
I'm in favor.
We still have a new board. Can you explain what a first reading means, what a final reading? So, when we're looking at the agenda, people know if it's going to be reread or if this is the final vote. I don't know if there's clarity.
Yeah, you'll see it at the, at the bottom where we're taking our action items. And it lists the name of the, it lists the name of the policy. And then it'll say first reading on the first policy, the second reading since first and final. So, the first reading is the Middleton Public School District putting something into effect. This, this is our, our own cause that we're gonna adopt. So, that has two readings. So, tonight we'll do one, and then we're gonna have a meeting later on in August. And we'll do the second reading, that'll put it into effect so that it's all set by the school year. You have to have two readings for just a standard policy. When you have a policy such as the second one around student discipline, there are mandated policies, and this falls under the mandated policy list. So, the state will send down recommended policies, they'll send down mandated policies, and this is a mandated. So, mandated is a first and final. It doesn't have to go through two readings. Go through the first reading because it's mandated, just getting, they want to make sure that you, as a board of that, understands the state policy and why it's happening. So, then, first reading, it's final. So, tonight, when we do the discipline piece, that should be a first and final, unless something comes up around it in other areas. But as far as what the state is telling us that we need to do, the changes there, which are outlined and Marco or Deb will talk to those, you'll understand why. So, does that, does that help everyone? All right, so you want to go on to the next one?
The next policies are an updated policy or 5114, student discipline. This is a updated and revised policy based on recent statutory updates from the state. You can see those changes that are first sight red and introduced in blue. Some of the highlights or some of the changes is introducing artificial intelligence, which is a new phenomenon that's been introduced. Again, also statutory language is to protect a class harassment, which is, which is new and statutory language. In-school suspension, the days have changed, those, that has changed. Other changes that have changed is for the purposes of policies, schools, school grounds. And transportation has been introduced into the language. As well as also just some of this also edits, again, a protected class harassment or retaliation. AIs, again, on page, we'll use the page, page seven, I think it's now, five, six. Electronic cannabis delivery system, that's new legal language. Instead of staff members, just, just the terminology of employees.
Question, Dr. B?
Yes.
Do you know what a underprotective class harassment? Do you know what alienage is? Electronic, one that's on page, page three, I believe.
Page reading background.
Page.
So, I've seen the term before, just feeling, you see right now. Almost referring to a legal aliens.
The illegal status of immigration. Illegal or illegal status of immigration. What I also provided the board, I know there was a question around the terminology of offenses. So, what I did was, I, I provided the board the terminologies of how we code this kind of offenses with the state when we do our reporting, so that it can give you, and it actually starts on, if you go, so you don't have to read the whole document, because it's actually 20 pages, but but if you go, if you start looking at page six in this document, it starts breaking down the definition of each of the incidents as it relates to behavior, you know, fighting, altercation. And they give you a description, battery assault, harassment, and so forth. I know those question were, you know, where did these definitions come from? So, this gives you kind of a a reference of where these definitions come from and how we define them or how the state defines, and that's how we call them to the system. And then you can see when you get closer what the, what defines a suspension versus an expel, expellable offense and so forth. It's an extensive list.
So, question, Speaker. So, going into the J, the, the protected class harassment, is it a specific disciplinary action for that? Or is that just disparate action will happen?
It would, yes, it will happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's more of a redefinition, correct?
Right.
Redefinition, okay.
So, right, and so, what, so when it comes to protective class harassment, there is actually, so we have a policy under that, so it's the harassment policy for students. So, they will have to, whether it might fall under Title IX or it can fall under our harassment policy. So, we will have to follow that protocol to investigate. And there are, they can be disciplinary actions that will follow.
Okay, thank you.
Speaker, Speaker, who makes that determination? Because kids can just be kids fighting with none of this involved. You know, like, that wasn't their intent or motive, they're just or whatever there is between the two of them.
So, if, they, it will start at the school administration. If, 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 if if the behavior is egregious, then it can be, it can end up at the superintendent level.
Very minor comment on B. To me, it may just be the way my brain works. It almost sounds at the very end there after serious physical injury and includes a vehicle or a dog, makes it almost seem like somebody could use that to say, like, your policy is saying that it must do this, this, and this. And so, I would almost recommend putting that into a separate sentence of this can on, on B on the first page. Sorry, I would just recommend include. Yeah, or just a separate sentence, this can be a vehicle or a dog or can include a vehicle or a dog, and otherwise, it makes it sound to me like it's inclusive. Yes.
Those pesky kinds. It's doing it as the last, last item of the list, but, but then you're interpreting it that way. So, then that leads to an issue.
I'm just afraid that someone will bring that up at some point in time. And that it's just better to keep it separate.
Or could you?
Advice and is how it is that, yeah, was this. So it's that, it definitely have to be injunction ready.
Yeah. So. I'll find the policy, but I have a couple of concerns because there's a couple of things on here that. Are on ongoing issues and I don't think that we're addressing them for a policy such as this. For instance, on page five, which has a slash aggressive. Number three under action leading to disciplinary action, removal from class, suspension or expulsion, number three. You're so obscene in playing languages and gestures. And we, we know kids are using portraying language a lot and not a lot's happening, but I think. That would be a concern, like are we going to begin the school year by saying we are, this is an item we're bringing to your attention and this is not gonna be allowed, we're gonna take disciplinary action. Because there's no sense in having the policy, we're not invited by it. And then on nine, the strikeout page nine, number nineteen, accumulation of offenses such as school class tardiness, class. Or study hall cutting or failure to attend detention. Those are all happy. And we're not, we're not attending to those. We have to follow through.
I, I totally agree. So we, so we do, uh, from a, from a technological. Per- perspective, we do have in-house. You know, programs that, that let us know about, you know. Obscene photographic images and alerts and we do. Challenge, we cannot control. The things that are outside our network, which. Is close to concern, the things that, that come our way, that we see or we catch through. You know, sometimes the kids, you know. Tell on each other and let us know, and so. Um, but I agree with you, um, I think we have to, uh, we did talk about this as a team actually last week. We had to raise the bar. Um, and we have to do it this year. Um, enough, and, and I said this, enough is enough. Um, and I'm asking the board for the support, um, that, because they will, they're going to come and complain that we have. Because we, we have to raise the bar. Um, and set the expectation.
When raising the bar, we're supporting our teacher and staff, so a teacher or administrator and the kid says, you know, whatever to that teacher. And we're just saying, oh, we're gonna put you. In a room for eighty-nine minutes so that we're not doing in-school suspension and here, here's a bag of chips. We're not showing them anything.
And, and at the same time, I mean, last year, you know, we did invest in. Detention, uh, two days after school detention and Saturday detentions.
It's not happening consistently at Middletown High School.
And at bo- at both sites, Middletown and New York, so we need, but we need, we need, we need to actually do, and we enforce that and making sure that they participate, that students who. Um, uh, violate. The policy. Participate on, uh, in, uh, the need to participate in this detention with a restorative approach. To understand why they are there. Um, and, and that there are consequences for these actions, and so, um. Because the, to your point, there are, the reason these policies are here is to create. Productive citizens for global world, and so now that we have a portrait of a graduate. If, if it's, you know, it only looks good on paper. Until, you know, but we have to see it actually. In action, and so this is the opportunity to actually make the portrait of actually. Breathe some life into it, um, and making sure that, that we see it in, in the lives of our students every single day, but. Um, enforcing these policies through restorative approaches. Through programs, but also, you know, having high expectations for our students, um, and making sure that. You know, everyone's held accountable to these policies, hence we'll, we'll be talking about another policy also around dress code.
Well, what?
Dress code.
Oh, dress code.
I have a quick question, so we're talking about discipline and I S S and detention and things like that, you said with a restorative approach, what does that look like?
So, um. So a restorative approach starts, first it starts in the classroom, right, is, is making sure that everyone understands what our tier one approaches are. Right, and so we, um, we have last year invested with, with a group of, uh, uh. Schools, uh, working with East Con and really understanding what tier one approaches are, right? And, you know, supporting our teachers are really building that capacity. Um, as well as also working with our powers and our interventionists around supporting tier one. Instruction, right? Um, is, and, and how do you actually embed that through instructional day? So that there is harmony between instruction. And really restorative strategies in the classroom. And then what does tier two look like? When students actually really need additional supports? And so that is where. Our S E S is coming, that is where I S S comes in. That is where. You know, our social work and our clinical services come in on making sure those, what are those levels of course look like in order to support those students. Um, and. To, uh, Chair Daniel's comments of, instead of, you know, pulling a student out for eighty minutes. And saying, okay, use a bag of chips, but there's no conversation around why you're out for eighty minutes. And, 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 and to restore the possible harm that may have caused. Defeats the purpose. Because then the behavior will continue. Right, and so the, the ideal situation is, okay. What did we do wrong and how can we fix it together? Right, and the best approach to a restorative is that this community, or the school community understands. What is the expectation, so that the school community holds each other accountable. So what is the expectation of that, right, and so. That is, that's kind of the goal of making sure that. All of these systems that are in place work in a. In a cohesive or a. An ecosystem that supports. The students every single day.
Yeah, that makes sense, so when we're talking about discipline and the ecosystem that you're talking about and the communication about having a sweet communication between the student and. The teacher or whatever it may be, that communication is separate or part of the disciplinary process of say you're in an I S S or detention or something like that, is it completely separate? You're gonna leave the detention and separately you're gonna have that communication, or is it one thing?
So it, it, it depends on the situation. It might be both. Or it might be separate. It, it depends on the situation. Ideally, it should be together, right, but there, there are certain situations that it might be, it might be separate, because the behavior might not be in the classroom. Or the unwanted behavior might not happen in the classroom, it might happen in cafeteria. Um, but if the behavior happens in the classroom, yeah, it should be separate. I mean, it should be together, sorry.
I have a couple of questions too, so. I'm getting the sense that the, you know, midweek and Saturday detentions. Are not always occurring, so who's responsible for making, following up? And seeing which students were assigned a Saturday detention and who actually showed up?
The administration.
Okay. I just found that was so much to do as an administrator, um, it, it, it's a lot.
The, so it, so. This, the, the, this, the detention is, is issued by the teacher. The, the follow-up and making sure that the log is complete. Um, is, is the A P.
Okay.
Of, of the section. Um, because they have to work in conjunction with the off, the transportation office to making sure that. They get it twenty-four hours to making sure that transportation is available.
Okay. And the other question is, what does I S S look like? You know, who monitors, you know, who's?
So there, there is an I S S monitor, um, at each of the, at schools, um, and so. Um, we are, we're, we're working on providing additional training this year for the I S S monitors, the S E L interventionists and the S C Ss. We want to introduce, um, a new a- approach to I S S. That introduces a mixture of restorative and mindfulness, so that I S S is not just. You come and sit with work, but actually. A combination of a clinical and restorative approach for students.
So who monitors the I S S around, do, is there like one person that's there all day and then teachers come in if they need help? Or?
There's one person that's assigned to.
And is it a teacher or?
Um, it's, uh, in, I think, it's a. A parent at the high school.
Okay.
And, uh, an I S S monitor. It was, was an interventionist before at the middle school.
Thank you.
I also had a quick question about the discipline, the things that are disciplinary in the list, one of them's a walkout from or sit-in within classrooms, where is it, that's something that's completely not allowed?
The walkout, so. That depends. That depends, so. We've had walkouts, so just, so the superintendent, um, has the, has the legal right to not allow a walkout if it, if it is a disruption to instructional day.
Wouldn't that kind of be, be welcome?
Yes, however. Depending on the topic. I'm, I'm a, I am a believer of student voice. And so. Um, there, there have been topics that, that. That are within the curriculum. That have, that have allowed to allow for structured walkouts. That allowed students to learn what it is their civic responsibility. To be able to demonstrate, right, and so we've allowed it and we've been successful at it. And so, but. If it is a disturbance, if it, if it's a disruption to instructional day, it's not about. That's a great question.
So to your point around, um. Was asked about transport, about detention and then transportation, so that's my understanding as of late, that if there's no transportation, then the kid doesn't have detention. So then are we providing there, are we, what are we gonna do to offset that, so that in fact the kid can stay through detention?
We, we do provide it.
But that's, that's what I, that's what my understanding was that. Some people that have written up a kid, they're, they're bringing told with transportation wasn't built for that day, so.
Well, I, I, I will have to follow up, that's not, that's not accurate, so they, they're not, they, they don't have transportation every single day, but if they're, if they're given detention. And let's say, let's say detention is Tuesday, Thursday and, and Saturday, if they get detention Monday. If they get a detention Monday, they have to show up on Tuesday for detention.
Right.
So, so transportation is provided, and so I, the question is, I have to follow up and making sure that. They, they're showing up to the Tuesday detention.
Number twenty-two talks about defines a school rule, so that's, that's another that you'd have to pay attention to, and then I'm just curious, and number twenty-seven. It's talking about possession of cell phones and numerous other, you know, tech, piece of technology. And it's, it's got an add, added addition of school transportation, so how are you going to enforce that, is that something where, um? Either you're gonna have to monitor some buses, you certainly can't put that on the bus driver, or is, or am I reading too much into that? But that's what it looks like. This is like if you give a mouse a cookie, so we take away cell phones, then it's.
I agree, that's almost too fast, and what do you want, school transportation?
Hasn't, excuse me, through the chair, hasn't, um, the transportation director, Martin, went in and addressed that and said that he works with the tackle bus drivers and if there's an issue on the bus, they. Have a, a way to coordinate that and, and bring it back.
For behavior, I heard, but I'm not, I'm not aware of that, phones, is that the case with Marco?
Say, say it again, I'm sorry, I was looking for the review.
Oh, it's on, on the scratch on page eleven and it's item number twenty-seven. And then it's, it's in blue on school transportation, it's referring to possession or use of cell phones and then other numerous pieces of technology. So I'm saying that, that how, how do we address that, that would be a challenge, because you would need monitors on your buses, certainly can't put that on the school bus forever. Way too much, and then. Deb wondered if Mark had already had issues around that, or if he was addressing that, or, and I said I was under the. Guys that he was addressing behavioral bias with that, but I wasn't sure that anything wrong with phones, because this is new.
Yeah.
Adding transportation in.
Right, most of the students in the morning, because I've ridden the buses, when we had issues, are listening to music a lot, other things, and that's fine until they get into school. And that's fine.
It's not fine on this new policy. So then how are we?
Can we just take it out?
That's not, I was gonna ask you, that's not the mandated portion?
No, that's not the.
Yeah, I would, I would, um, Chairman, to take out. You know, use of cell phones or whatever on trans, on transportation.
Number twenty-eight, correct?
And twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight's the beeper.
I was thinking that, it's funny that you mentioned it, I'm wondering if kids aren't gonna go back to beepers and pagers because you took away their cell phones, or some little doubles, you know?
How you gonna, gonna have a phone and gonna talk to the person with the beeper, right? They used, only had the beepers out.
But you have to remember a cellphone, a number, Ricky.
But I remember people used to beep each other, they had to go find the payphone.
That's right.
And call that number, that's why, you know, so I wouldn't worry about the beeper.
Now I was just thinking, you know, I bet they're gonna come up with something.
So when we, when we do action, we'll just do it with the understanding that all those numbers are gonna be removed out. Is everybody okay with that?
Want me to make a motion to that?
Sure.
Yeah, so I will, um, make a motion, please regarding policy, policy five one four four on page. Eleven of the cross-out eleven, number twenty-seven and twenty-eight to take out, um, or delete on school transportation. And both, um, number twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Our students now, if you have an eye, I have a sixteen, so she brings her, if I take your phone away, she just uses her iPad. She still has access to her phone.
Yeah.
Right, Mike?
Right.
So, to, when you, you just maybe think about like, what else they're gonna do, they're still bringing their iPad.
Yeah, one of these tablets. I think it's the transportation piece.
So we're gonna put those in a yonder though, I mean, are we just gonna say, you know, like if I bring it, I'm not supposed to, I'm not supposed to bring my tablet. But yonder holds my cellphone, what would you do with mine?
Yeah, but the pouch actually doesn't allow you to, it connects to this.
It's big enough to hold a tablet or something?
No, well, it won't, it won't, it, it won't, there's no connection.
Oh, so block. It's gotta go through your phone to get your iPad, it just doesn't emit your iPad. It can go straight to your iPad.
Yeah, it'll go straight to you, but I'm asking, if I brought in my, I'm just, I'm being fair, if, if I brought in my tablet, I'm not supposed to.
Right.
A yander doesn't hold a tablet, does it?
No.
No.
It's not bigger, right, so what are you gonna do? You're gonna take, just think about it, what you're gonna do, because everybody's gonna bring their tablet.
You're not supposed to have a tablet, a tablet's listed.
This is specific to just transportation.
I'm just talking about.
Yeah, no.
You're gonna bring your tablet on the bus, you can't bring your tablet on the bus, right?
No.
You can't, who's gonna be on the bus?
Yeah, I.
And your backpack.
We, right, we can amend.
Gonna bring your tablet, if you're gonna have access to your phone.
Maybe you should look at this, because they're allowed to use those things on the bus, correct, currently? Yes.
Yeah, if we cross this off, then they will be able to bring the tablet on the bus.
Right. You only wanna get rid of school transportation, because it's school grounds, you don't want them on school grounds, so you're only, you're only scratching transportation.
Right.
I think she's asking, what would the policy be when they do bring, like just separately, what happens when someone brings their iPad to school, right?
Same with, same with this.
But they have to pay. Because they can't get on a wifi.
It doesn't matter, you can use data.
But they don't have to pay you, then I can't use our data, I mean, they will have to.
They have their own data, yeah, data spring.
So some tablets, so.
Uh, well, it will figure that out, we'll get to you on the. Booze policy.
But probably, I I think you.
You will have an unintended consequence of this push, you want your blind spot, that's something you want.
The the um motion just reads to on school transportation for twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Okay, so Deb moved and Adam seconded, all in favor, if we need any more discussion, or was that enough for right now? All in favor?
Hi, Kelly.
Any extensions, motion here.
Excuse me, before before I may ask, are policies in um in perpetuity, or do they go, are they only yearly?
Like, like a mandate policy would would stay in effect until they change again.
I was just asking.
Policies like the one we just did, we can change it.
Okay.
And if you look at the end of your policies, like if you look on policy, it'll tell you when it's last amended, and there's other, you know, dates and things.
Just asking to be your, and for unintended consequences.
Right. So in reviewing the rest of this, does anyone else see any? Red flags or anything we should review again?
I have a quick question about the expulsion part of the policy, the language changed from word of education to board, because we're not part of the expulsion proceedings, or?
Right, the the board, the board has a hearing officer that represents the board. An impartial hearing officer.
We're all set with the rest, or is there something else that you want to bring to everyone's attention? We'll review on policy, it sure is. So, we're all set, are you on the ones, where are we at? All set?
Okay, next policy is policy four one one nine. Um, the administration has been talking about this policy for about two years now, um. We've been talking to uh some of the new leadership. We have not had, uh, we've not had a a personnel appearance or dress code policy for personnel. We know that city has somewhat a very. Some what of a a a personal policy, but the district has not. Have had ones um in place, um and so, but we know that we, we're down to a point that we. Um, decided that we needed to have one in place, we've had, you know, questions um and requests. Um, from um other colleagues and bargaining units around some guidance as it relates to. Um, um support on addressing uh dress code questions and so forth, hence um. We are, we created, well, I shouldn't say, we we created a dress uh personnel appearance policy. Using different um exemplars that we saw in different um municipalities. Hence, we want, we present this one to the board for their review, their first review. Uh, I have Harry and Jen here, who worked um for some time on this policy. Knowing that dress code policy can be very uh.
I see.
But yes, yes.
Yeah, I was just thinking through the chair that um this is half facetious. But to have a pictorial, what a professional outfit looks like, because when you say that. Um, no offense to the younger generation, but they have a different view of what that looks like. You know, that's why people go to job interviews with prime brand dresses, right? Because people say, dress up. And it's a very common phenomenon in job interviews.
I have a question, how does this mirror student um dress code policy? Is it similar?
No.
Okay.
It is not similar.
You know, other districts are addressing student.
Yes.
Um, dress code as well, um especially post-COVID, that's what they're claiming that there's been a lot of changes around, how people are coming to school.
But, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Harry. The the, there's there's a difference between student dress code when you're dealing with personal dress code. Because of the, there's employees versus students, and so, um, there's different. Different, I wanna say laws that that govern kind of just when it comes to dress code policies. Because one is conversations, right? So there is an expectation as an employee versus students.
I was just curious, like when they said the three inches above the knee. I always, I always found it very difficult to say to a student, you know, your outfit is like. Way too short, and then the teacher walks by with a similar outfit.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Eight pictures.
And it's three inches above me standing up, yeah.
I didn't even get there, I just said, this is really nice for the dance floor, but not for school. I think we should accept that. It's the best. I asked if people were overalls. That's one of the.
Overalls?
It said any colored denim jeans, pants, and overalls are restricted to dead and designated dressed on days. But even on dressed on day overalls.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I've been, I've been seeing a lot of.
Yeah.
This is specifically jeans, they're talking any color jean. Okay, I'm just asking.
So, this is, uh, so this is where dress code policy gets interesting, because you, you can, the list gets longer and longer. Um, and interesting, um.
For the chair, Dr. B, does that mean if somebody is sent home because they're wearing chain overalls and a tube top? Uh, that used to be the deal, right? She's laughing, because that used to be. Um, and it says, result being sent home to comply with this policy will not be compensated. Is that for the day or just for the hours missed? Like, how, how do you? And that's because they clock in and clock out.
It's correct.
Just making.
Yeah.
Sure, so if I'm only going fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes would be a quarter of a day, right? If you have to take personal time?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, any other comments on this one? Do you have all? Anything to add?
Oh, no, I think that's the coverage, I mean, I think the the policy is fairly self-explanatory. And and also, again, to your points, I mean, there are some nuances, but ultimately. You know, looking to set an example for standard day-to-day work. And business casual provides an opportunity for people to dress in, you know, comfortable, but but, you know, neat looking clothes. And also dress, you know, with tie and jackets on, it's, it provides, you know, an opportunity for. A good amount of self-expression, as well as also maintaining a certain threshold.
Was this a standard housing, or?
Uh, well.
The one that we found, or the?
I I wrote it, a combination of, like Dr. B said, I mean, some information from municipalities and other places, but ultimately. There's, there's usually, once you start talking about, you know, business casual. There's usually uh, where it's.
I was just gonna ask about like stilettos, is there a, people, right, people do?
She wears them, she had one on her graduation, and I think she could.
Wait a second, don't talk about.
You can walk in them all the power too.
God forbid, there's an evacuation. That's why I was asking, I didn't know this there, and that's why I was asking.
Well, see what happens.
Yep. It does provide for some um managerial discretion.
Yes.
It 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 matters to safety.
Because it is a safety issue.
Yeah, it can be, yeah.
I didn't see, I was looking.
Does it, um, are we able to revisit the student policy then, on dress code?
Well, we, we, it's it's actually in the handbook, it's not a, we don't have a policy, it's in the student handbook.
Right, if everybody's all set with the policy, then go ahead, the next item is capital project updates.
So I just wanted to go uh give a update on some capital projects, um, as you aware. Last week, um, at the common council. The memorandum. Move forward to the next step. We. We went over the. The city, the bond committee uh drafted um the memorandum of the, oh, sorry, the. The ordinance. For the common council to to put on. Their agenda, um, it was reviewed, I do have a copy here, if you would like to see it. And so. Once this is, once this is approved, um, and if approved by the common council, then it would go to the ballot. Uh, the project is um, is based on the estimate of that is provided by the architects. Which includes soft um uh cost, as well as legal fees that require and and things of that sort. Um, it's important that what they don't include, because ba- a bonding request is separate than what is requested to the state. Um, for the reimbursement, so the bonding we have, has to demonstrate that the city can actually cover. Uh, the entire cost of the project, which is what you see here, the forty-eight million. But the request for reimbursement will be close to sixty-seven percent, which is higher than the reimbursement that was for Beeman. Um, which is a good thing, um, which would mean that the city will have to pay. What, thirty?
Thirty-eight percent.
Thirty-eight percent of the forty-eight, um, which is, that's a high rate uh for Middletown. Or what re- reimbursement rate, and so what does that mean? Um, and this is where. Um, we will have to champion, um, if this is approved. Um, is that we will have to then start to educate our community around what the reimbursement rate. On uh before, you know, the election, the the date of the vote around. The reimbursement, the importance of this project for McDonough, you know, it's a hundred-year-old building, the needs of that. Um, of that building, the the, um, how it services the community. And really start doing, you know, a a campaign um for the vote. To be successful, um, this will then go to the people. And making sure we educate them, and so that will be work that we would have to do once it's it's it went, and if it's voted. Um, we will start working on really educating the community, and that will include poverty, you know. Of um mailers and videos and knocking on doors and things like that. Um, so we kind of all hands on deck to 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 support um. This project. And so that's, that's one thing, we will be presenting on August nineteenth. I will be presenting along with the architects, so if you can, you know, put that on your calendars at the common council meeting. Um, I will, uh, please um, join me and the architects and Marco and Sheila. On that day, as we will be presenting um to the common council on the McDonough project, and kind of the first draft of the. The the building.
It's a special meeting.
And uh, and I think it's, did they change it to, is web, is it web? It's both, what time? I get confused, um, it's, I I will, I will send a reminder, um, Joyce, we can send a reminder.
And if I may interrupt through the chairs, um, before people ask, you cannot add additional language into bonding language. So it can't say, because it would seem like it would make sense, right, to add like an asterisk and sixty-eight or sixty-seven percent. But you're not allowed to put anything on there except the bond language specific to. Yeah, because people might not know, they might not, they might say, why can't you just add it, makes more sense, but it's not allowed.
Right.
It does make sense, but and to to your point about trying to get a campaign, and perhaps the McDonough, whether it's um. Their PTO, GTA, or their, kind of governments kind of doing as well.
Yes.
You know, getting those folks to maybe do a PAC, they can, they can do promotions.
As well as our graduates, or in.
Yeah.
At Beeman, and at the high school, um, who have graduated from McDonough as well. Uh, this work. And so, so that is the McDonough, um, I also want to give an update, and I'm I'm ex-Marko to jo- join me. Um, and this is, so one of the things, and I spoke to Chair Daniels in in on check-in meetings. One of the things that I'm gonna ask board members to to help, um, is, I'm I'm, and I'm calling it board champions. So there's some high-level projects that I'm gonna. So there's some high-level projects that I'm gonna ask board members, if they're interested to jump on board, to join the working committee at, at the administration level, please, just say, I wanna be that board champion or champions. Because there's some, there's a lot of projects that are in the pipeline, and so we'll probably require at the board member, at the board member level, to some additional work beyond probably your committee work, kind of to support, in addition to kind of the SOP work. And so, and I'll be talking about that. So one of them is actually the HVAC, so we know we've gotten the, the first round of grants, which we were kicking off, those HVACs very soon. And so we anticipate the second round to, to open, and, and we are going to entertain a a conversation around pursuing the second wave, because we do need some of the buildings AC to be big plates. I'm concerned about the high school. This building is probably going to go any day now. I'm concerned about all of the schools, library, media centers, and health care condition. Yeah, Lawrence. And so it, it's a lot, and so we're anticipating, hopefully, the second wave to come soon to help us. Other things that I need the board to be aware.
I'd just interject there for Marco, for the chair. For the high school, because it's a emergency shelter, is there extra funding available for FEMA or anybody, because it is a?
There's the indoor, there's the HVAC grant that we applied for last year.
Through FEMA?
It's through the state, which.
I'm just wondering if FEMA has something extra, because it is an emergency shelter, which we don't know, has it, it has been scored more than?
I spoke about that just today. It came in the sign that requires people for the, the other projects that they're doing. I can ask that question, the, the, the big part is that the city has to pay their portion of that, which is thirty-two percent. And any of the applications that we move forward with the state, so we need that commitment before we apply, which the deadline will be, be at December.
Because it is an important thing, we, you know, I was saying, emergency shelters is a big deal, and it's under a different program.
Yeah. Um, thank you. So other things that we, that we are working on, so as you know, in the last coming council, we, we finally got the approval to use some of the funds that we earmarked for the high school pool to support the needed and emergency repairs for the Moody courtyard windows, as well as the Farm Hill second floor wiring. So that work is either, I think it's, what, far has been done, Woody's ready to be done, of which, it's already already a year that's, that's been on the docket to be done. The high school condenser coil had to be repaired and cleaned at sixty-three thousand dollars. The high school motor, one of the ACs had to be replaced at, at eleven thousand dollars. The high school overhead painting system needed to be upgraded, because it just was not working. That was sixteen thousand dollars, we had to do an, an asbestos inspection and management based on a new state requirement, which is one of the unfunded mandates. That was at twenty-five thousand dollars. We had to do the McDonough renovation study. And so that was twenty-five thousand dollars, and then we had to do some security, in the school security enhancements district-wide, thirty-one thousand dollars. I also had to, uh, sign a, for a an indoor quality inspection that is required now by the state through unfunded mandate, I think we talked about this before, that, that's close to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that had to be paid out of our unexpended balance. And so as of, as of now, we're at close to four hundred thousand dollars that we had to find funds through grants and unexpended ballots, the un, un, unexpended balance in order to cover a lot of these capital repairs that we did not expect. So one of the things that, as we get, as we begin to kick off again, budget season, this is gonna be a very important topic that we need to discuss, because as you know, the five-year plan lists a lot of these capital repairs, and it just, every time I see Marco coming towards my way, it's like the bionic man running like the opposite direction. And he's like behind me, don't go, don't go. And so, so this is, I, I just wanna keep this as a topic for the board to keep you aware, because, as, as you're aware, that every budget season, I bring this also to the attention of the common council, as the city is responsible for the buildings, while we're responsible for the maintenance of the building. And so these are things that we continue to kind of monitor.
Excuse me, here with chair, would it be possible, I know there's an election this November, but after that election, to bring forward all these unfunded Monday, mandated costs to the state legislature, and ask for a special dispensation for monies to come out of that budget?
I, yes, I mean, if, yes, I mean, can, I would welcome a conversation and a strategy of, of, of doing that.
You tell them. I mean, I think that's really important, I think that's your point, but these are, these are unintended consequences, the costs. You know, it's like a feel-good thing, but you can go to the legislature and ask for money through whomever is in office, whether it's Senate or the, the state senators or state representatives, and ask for money from that budget to, to be refunded back, or to be given back to for their unfunded mandates. And I would bring it up at the superintendent's meeting, because these costs are out of control, and they're not, and, you know, some may or may not be imperative. And it would be really prudent to let the legislature know how much it's costing local, where their budgets are already tight.
Yes, and so we do bring it up at the superintendent's meetings, because many of us are feeling it. But absolutely, I mean, we can, we can bring it up to and the others too. Cause there's another one that's, you know, that's in the pipeline, that's close to three hundred thousand dollars, but we have a little time for that. And that's another air quality assessment that's required by districts. So, but I do wanna make sure that the board is aware. The other thing that we're, we're, we're going to have to champion, as we discuss capital projects, but also the McDonough project, is we're going to have to have very soon a conversation of really looking into possibly, we districting the district. One of the things that in our, our next meeting with the city, with Chair Daniels, and I are going to put on the agenda to make sure that the city keeps us in the loop with all these developments that are happening. Cause I was not aware about the one that was, that's going to happen in Lawrence. I know the one that, about the Wesley, I was not aware about the one in Lawrence, but also I've been seeing these pop-up, you know, single-family homes that are happening throughout the city. And so, you know, knowing that we only have one high school, one middle school, that's are pretty full, and knowing that Lawrence is, is pretty full, I, we have, we need to be aware of these developments, how it's going to impact our schools and, and, you know, the capacity that many of these schools, and so these, these conversations have to happen sooner than later, of which, which and, and, and being transparent with our community of how this impacts areas, and looking at, you know, our demographics and, and student growth district-wide.
And if McDonough is going to be larger than we, by redistricting, we could bring back some of those areas in the north end that are now distributed to Farm Hill, for instance.
Correct, correct. And again, and we're also, and I know Harold, in our one-on-one, we discussed the, you know, creating that opportunity for the higher high school students, so if that program opens up, you know, that might bring students also from out of district, which increases in volume, so we, those, that, if all of that happens, you know, it's enough, it, it requires that conversation to happen sooner, sooner than later.
Go through planning and zoning, there's actually a piece of planning and zoning, so you might wanna work with the planning director, that says the impact on schools because of population.
Do you recall the past, if they used to have that communication with your board, I thought that was like a, kind of a stain with them.
I thought it was too, yes, so maybe it's just gone by the wayside, but the good news is the Newfield Street is not kid-friendly. The Newfield Street development is for like fifty-five, it doesn't say fifty-five and over, but they're like one-bedroom, and they have all kinds of nice amenities for mid-age folks.
Are you talking about the one on the?
It's great deal.
It's already, it's more than one-bedroom, no?
Yeah, they got three bedrooms. Not designed for kids. They're not designed for kids. Not that some kids won't be in there, but it's not gonna be a conglomerate of three hundred units with kids, which was a fear initially.
Oh, I have one question. If we, is redistricting is because of McDonough School, is that gonna be a temporary thing? Or it's gonna be permanent?
It would be permanent.
Okay.
I mean, it, that's usually the purpose of redistricting, it's, it's, you know, permanent.
What's the typical timeframe? Marco, do you recall, or do you recall, and any of your experience with, you know, beginning to end, implementing it?
It's a year-long process.
A year-long, okay.
It's a year-long process. Cause that requires a lot of conversations. And it's not, it's a lot of work. Cause we would have to put a lot of the programs on the table and really see what's, how the different schools are impacting and, and principals have to come to the table and, and all that to get their thinking and and programs and transportation has to be looked at. Also, it, it's a, a year, at least a year. That, that has to be brought to the conversation, yeah, that will be part of the conversation.
It's six-thirty, and Deb's gonna, um, just leave, we just wanna acknowledge her loss of her mom and to, uh, her, um, our behabs, thank you so much.
Thank you. A lot of peaceful, at least, due to my surface scenes. Thank you very much, I appreciate the thought on this, I really do, especially, I lost both my parents in four months, I really, really appreciate it.
All right. Okay. Okay.
So on those?
Yeah.
Okay, so the yonder update?
All right, so yonder, so you received kind of an overview of what the yonder product is. And kind of also, this is just an estimate, just based on last year's enrollment, I still have to give this year's enrollment, so, so just know that that's just based on last year's enrollment, middle school and high school. The other thing is, and so in conversation with the team, we, the, what we're, our best thinking is to create a phase-in approach, so this is not something that we're going to do, and they're gonna show up the first day of school, and this, this is what's gonna happen. And so our best thinking is that, and I put this up on, on the whiteboard, is that during the month of, and the months are not set in stone, but during the month of August to September, will kind of be a three-step approach, will be the educational, the logistical, and, and I call school leaders, right? And so it's basically educating the parents, students, the staff, and the community on the why, how, and when of the yonder, right, the approach. And then the logistical planning, allowing the staff, the IT, to really plan out the logistical of, making sure we set up the, the magnets, getting people used to, you know, where they're at, where they're going to be stationed, and so forth. I'm making sure that the, the, the setup, the, the, the IT aspect of it is all ready and, and launched. And then starting to do some recruitment with school leaders, and asking students to kind of lead, and starting to kind of be models for the implementation, so going to the, the, the clubs, the athletes, the vol- and, and asking students to volunteer, to kind of really start, in a sense, piloting this with them, and, and, and kind of really try to model some of this in, in the schools. And then by the time we, we complete phase one, we start with the phase two, which is actually start to begin to again, do, continue with the educational, and, and start with the distribution. And that is through the month of October and November. And with, and that, with the goal that by the time they come back in late November after Thanksgiving, we will be at full implementation. Now, that also would allow us to the questions we had about the laptops and probably beepers and so forth, to figure out some of the kinks and, and get ahead of the probably, the wise and students and say, okay, we, we found out this gap, and we found out that gap, and so okay, let's, let's pivot this way, let's pivot that way, so, but it allows us to figure out a lot of the unknowns, when it comes to many IT implementations, and many of these programs that, that students do figure out sometimes something around, but it allows some of these things to, to to figure out. And so that's where we're at. In trying to do the implementation, we did speak to different districts who have implemented this. The majority of districts, all of them said, at the end of the implementation, they have seen actually positive results, and first of all, in engagement, they have seen decrease in behavior issues and overall. What they actually have lifted in situations is pickups in the implementation, lost cases. Right, that was, I was, lost couches. Another one was actually, which was very interesting, in, in one district, was actually students actually not being able to wean off having access to their cellphone, and, and struggling with actually having their device or access to their device, which caused challenge for a teacher who were, who, who was accustomed to having a student in the back on the phone in a navigation class, so that, that was a change and shift. So one of the things that I actually did ask, is recommend is making sure that the clinical staff is ready to engage with students like that, and making sure that there are supports. And so I have already spoken to Basiana of really starting to talk to her staff, the social workers, this, the the ESS staff and so forth, on starting to really look at what that case management looks like, when we have these possible pop-ups that might happen in the school, when students really realize, oh my, I don't have access to my phone, what am I going to do? And so knowing that this is, this, this is, you know, and the reason, this can be seen as an addiction, and so how do you wean off the addiction without, with, with, in, in a very, in a compassionate way, knowing that this is a reality for many of our students. And so these are things that, and hopefully in a phase-in approach, we can navigate through as a community through the spirit of grace and understanding and patience. Through the spirit of grace and understanding and patience um. And but it allows us to actually have flexibility. So we go into December, okay, we go into December, Thanksgiving is there, we go in a minute notice. But it allows for that flexibility. So comments, feedback.
Definitely glad you brought up the point about the, I mean, I think there will be some issues from a lot of students. I mean. That's an anecdotal thing. I went on a cruise probably months ago and I didn't have internet access. It was like. It was a shock. And it's like I I was okay, but but it was just like. Take it up. Oh, I can't do anything. But you you will get that from kids. That's. Definitely gotta be ready for that, right?
We we but we also, as the adults. And and I will. Speak to our administrators. We also have, as it does have to set the example, right? Because the minute we see. If if the students see adults using their phones. Right? And non, like during the, you know, during. Let's say a instruction or. In a conversation with a student, they're using the phone, they're like, well, why I have it in my pouch, you know, right? That that's the first thing they're gonna say, right? And so we also have to be, you know, mindful that they are going to watch and they're gonna do, will challenge us um and setting expectation um. Um.
In your conversations with our superintendents. Did they offer you some examples of how difficult that was with staff? Because that's one of my major concerns. Is getting staff on board also. And what will be the expectations placed upon them and set an example for the rest of the students?
So we we have, I mean, we have um expectations already, right? We have policies already in place for. Our staff. I I think I think. I think our advantage is, again, from what I hear from staff, is that they're waiting for this. Right? They they are actually waiting for this um. To create some they so some type of um. Regulation, if you may um. Because, you know, the lived experience is that a lot of our behavior issues are stemmed from this. Um. And so. I think once once they know that we are. Providing this as a resource, if you may. To support. Students and and our learning environment. I think everyone was gonna jump on board. That is, that is my hope. I think then then the ex- again, to the point of expectations. The expectation is here now. I think we all have to.
Own up to ours, so.
Yep. We all have to own up to it uh. And. In the best interest of our students and the best interest of our community.
And it might be a little early to answer this question, but the enforcement piece. Is it going to be, oh, put your phone away, or why is it out? Go straight to the office if it's out of the pouch? You may not be able to answer that now, but.
No, we I, so we have some model regulations that we that the team shared um from different districts, so. Um. There there. There are from first warning is put it away, second or put it in the pouch. To it's gonna be confiscated.
How did they get it out in the first place?
They didn't put it in.
They didn't put it in the pouch.
Okay.
And and we also have.
Meaning the teachers need to monitor that, you mean?
The uh or staff.
No, but I'm saying at the beginning of the day, isn't that what everyone's expected to put their phone back in time?
Correct, correct, but there might be students who. Might not put it on on my.
Teachers are distracted.
Or distracted, or a student might bring a a a second phone.
Substituted phone, right?
Or they also mentioned that a deodorant, you know, the solid deodorants.
That's right.
Kind of along the same measurement. So a kid could put something in there. And get through and still have his phone in his backpack. But then to Dr. B's point.
Of course, right.
If I see that he's got his phone out, then I'm gonna either. You set up that protocol, but I'm gonna either, you know, take the phone away or you go to the office with the phone. I think it's important, maybe they go to the office, maybe this is one place, because I don't think teachers want that responsibility of, I'm moving house phone.
I would think, no, that is from my experiences, yeah, that would not be a good idea.
Right, right.
Right. And so. So the feedback from some of this district is that the 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 front load. Of the implementation is heavy.
Mm hmm.
But. Once, once, once the expectation is there, it gets easier. So the beginning of the implementation is gonna be, it possibly is gonna be.
So maybe the structure is better and the enforcement.
Right, so it's gonna require possibly. Some of us um to support up from up from central office to be at the school to support.
Mm hmm.
Um the schools in the beginning. So that. So that. The conditions um and the expectations. Get. We get the momentum and then gradually release. While students, it it happened with scholarship. In the beginning, scholarship was, you know, getting them to get used to tacking in. Now, if they're used to it, all the kids come in and it's just smooth.
They can get through a reasonable amount of time to miss their classes.
Yeah. And that's a good, that's the advantage we have, because they're already tapping in.
Mm hmm.
So they just gotta tap in with the. And that's at the same time.
The tapping will occur at the same.
Yeah. That's right, that's the.
So called magnet, it's the same one.
And it can occur numerous places.
Yes.
If if students are coming in numerous places in the building.
Right.
You can have as many actions like.
Yeah.
I mean, you're killed by it.
There are how many spaces for tapping in? Six?
Uh at the high school, there's one, two, three, four, five. And there's one, two. Four, then the I mean.
Four. Okay, but I just doing the numbers here with a thousand kids in each location.
Yeah.
Okay, well, obviously.
Yeah.
It's slow at first, but as Dr. B stated. After a while, it becomes automatic. And the yonder pot uh pouches have a spot for the IDs I've seen.
Yeah.
And that makes it easier because then they have one.
They just do one of these, they just move the pouch or different.
Well, they sealed the pouch, but then the ID is there and they can tap in for attendance. On both the beginning of the day and and the redistricting class.
So the kids are in line, correct? They come in off the bus.
Sure.
Wait in line.
Yep.
When they have plenty of time to do that, get to a home. Is there still a home room? There's there's no longer a home room for checking, right?
For Beeman.
For for Beeman, they go to advisory.
Press 30 blocks.
Yeah. The high school first period, maybe. They're like you.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Are they still allowed to use their phones during like three periods, like lunch or study hour or not?
Yeah.
I think too that when the we had discussion at the meeting, I think it's important just to note that the administrators are present and um. We're all cognizant of the fact that that this truly is an addiction and that and you have to. Give that you to the grace or the understanding of the student and where they're at and to add to your experience as well. Um in in your incident, but I think that it's. It's it's good to know that they're looking at from that perspective. I think. I think the whole approach around the committee was around. Um, you know, a healthier choice, you know, this this is a healthy choice for trying to help, but in making that healthy choice, we have another health issue. That's surprising because they're dealing with. This true addiction that they have to this device, so we have to help them out with that as well. So I I think that we're all cognizant of that. And I think it's just a way of working it out and how to proceed.
And you know. So something, what's interesting is also when. When I was learning about this. If they. I and I didn't notice, even even. In the entertainment world, the pouches is becoming a reality. So if you go to a concert now or or a comedy show. They have to put your phone in the pouch. Because it has the copyright law as you can, according so far. So. So it's becoming now. Part of. A lot of a lot of vengeance in the name of.
Maybe Taylor Swift can do a public service announcement.
There you go.
Yeah.
I'll ask the chair to please make that.
Right.
Any other questions around that?
Well, just a quick question. I can't read all this. Is these the, are these the figures for costs that you're projecting?
Correct.
Okay.
And I already secured funds that amount. About through, yeah, to a state bank.
State bank?
The two percent.
Anything else you want to point out?
That's about it for now for. Yonder.
I mean. Yeah, it's a fair update.
Yeah, so um as part of our SOP and um. Kind of feedback from. From the principals and teachers and parents. And so um we in. We transitioned um into a new communication platform um. Uh. That is used by many districts um here in Connecticut, but also nationally um that does almost. Every um um in different languages, but also um very customer friendly. Um. It's been well received by our principals, our teachers, um parents. Jesse has gotten a lot of great. Uh feedback and it's called Parent Square. I'm not sure if many of you uh and if you are familiar with it. Um but it does um um. As. Great potential. And so I asked Jesse to kind of give kind of a brief overview of of Parent Square. Um and um. The great things it does uh for our families.
Good evening, everyone. I I don't think I have to introduce myself. It's not reported um. But I know Jesse will be wearing a dress for community meetings instead of having um. I want to preface this with I have a sick husband and child at home, so I'm like, oh, I'm going to home anyhow. Um, very excited that we have adopted Parents Square. As Dr. B said, we have had really good um. Initial responses from our community. This is in large part um. Uh a direct response through the. Um data collection process that um through which our strategic operating plan was created. So um specifically, it. Falls under the third pillar, which is communicating with clarity and consistency. And that pillar is described as MPS is committed to developing systems of communication that support collaboration between homeschool and community. Increase organizational efficiency and prioritize accessibility. Um as Dr. B mentioned, Parents Square is. Um it's accessible in different languages. It is ADA compliant. So if someone um. For example, if they. Aren't able to see something, it it's screen readers work well with it. So it's all very exciting. Um but what if parents? So first of all, uh Parents Square is made to do these three big things. Unify all commu- unify all communication tools you use in. Uh classrooms, sites, districts, um and then upgrade the basic communication, how classroom to home communication happens. And then solve issues around um. Just these different things, urgent alerts, um report cards, how they're delivered. And also, um we're gonna use it for delivering. S back test course um, which saves an enormous amount of time for one of our team members. And attendance notices. So those are just some of the things that it can do. Um but a more kind of in-depth look at it is that the top row of these little icons, text, email, push notifications and voice calls. Are ways that we can communicate with families. Um three out. Really, two out of the four are two-way. Um. Voice calls, nobody can call you through uh Parents Square, calls can be made outward. Um but. This truly is a two-way communication device or app, excuse me. And by that, I mean that it's not just I send a text to Adam and um he can't respond back. Like that's the traditional school messaging. Platform is just one way. Like you get the information and parent, sorry, you can't ask questions back, can't remember. Uh in reverse. So it also connects with social media. We are not doing that. Um it connects with website, are doing that and um it is an app on both Apple and Android. It is also um. Completely computer friendly as well. What can it do? So just to give a, this is a little bit of a view from the behind the scenes from our own, I like what we can do with it. Um we can tech, we can send text messages, we can send um push push notifications, which if you don't know what a push notification is, it's just like when your phone. Uh lights up and it's, it's like, all of these are push notifications, like, so these little things that come up during the day. Um also, voice calls can be made, email, and then um you can. It says flexible recipient list, which means that you can create call lists. I'm gonna say call lists, it's distribution list on the fly. You can also um have community members join. I'll mention that a little bit more later. The other thing that individual schools can do. It it breaks down to the school level and classroom level. It looks a lot like old school Facebook. Um you can share pictures of your students, what's happening. Um people can comment underneath. The comments are automatically only viewable by the author of the post, so um. So that there aren't like, if there's a nasty comment. Or it's one, God forbid, towards like one parent to another, only the teacher would see that, or only the person who actually authored the post. And posts can only be authored. Excuse me, by school staff. By principals uh and teachers. Um. You can also direct message. This is a great way to um. You can either uh just directly talking between teacher and uh parent or caregiver. Um. Makes it really easy for teachers to uh communicate with families. The other aspect of this is that a teacher can set their um in quotes, office hours. And um. Which can say like that they are available during their contracted hours and not outside of that. So that parents know, oh, I can't like if I message Mr. Smith, I'm not gonna get him after. Blank hour. So um. Next, we will be doing attendance um notifications through this. So if a child is absent for. A day, like they'll get um their caregiver parent will get a text message. Um the the parent can also indicate through the app um that their child is absent for the day um. And then excuse notes um can be submitted through this and it does align with um our regulation. But we're not, we haven't fully implemented that part yet, but. Um and there's more. Uh. The really exciting part about this is that we already use um. Google calendars, excuse me, and um for each of our schools. And so if you were to put information in Parents Square's calendar, so in your individual schools, like. Um I'll say Facebook or Parents Square group. Um it will talk back to the Google Calendar, which then leads to our our website. So which is great. It's it's dual-way sync, so. Um secure document delivery, this is um what we're gonna start doing our S back um test for. Through versus right now, it's a piece of paper that goes into a backpack. And um for all of us who have ever dealt with pieces of paper in backpacks, the backpack is like a black hole. It's just kind of like. Things disintegrate and disappear and get stuck under bananas in there, so. Guaranteed to conference signups. It's a really easy way to do that. Forms of permission slips can be done through here and then also just RSVP to events, um quick polls when needed. So how will parents and caregivers um and the community use Parents Square? So this is what. Yeah, I'm sorry that the pictures are so small, but um. So the best thing about Parents Square, well, I don't want to say this is best, this is a really awesome point, though. Is that as a parent, you are not required to download the. You can still receive updates about your child, about what's happening in school. They will come through text message and email, just as we have been communicating with our families. Um if they want to engage a bit more with the classroom, with the school through the app, then they can download the app. Or use it on a on a desktop. Um but they will still get all of the information, even if they don't download the app.
So on that, if they they just have to create an account or is that vertical then?
Thank you for saying, because I actually didn't uh mention that quite part. All of the data that Parents Square uses pulls from Power School, so all of our student data, contact information. All of the data that parent square uses pulls from Power School, so all of our student data, contact information, all that. Um is pulled straight from Power School, so. If you registered your child in school, you put your contact information in, so we already have that, so they will, they'll, they'll receive it. They don't have to do anything. It's, it's, you're automatically opted in to getting information from your child's school district once you register them. And then lastly, it's super easy. Um teachers and staff can share school-related news on parent square and parents receive responded. And do all these different things, so they are part of um. Really an online community, but that has real-world um touchpoints as well. And I went really fast. So again, um the first email that I sent out informing. Um parents in the community or in our school community that we are adopting parent square. And that like these are the dates when you should expect different things. The immediate response was one parent, um I got a bunch of different emails, but one parent in particular uh was over the moon ecstatic of. Her email was, you guys listened to us and you did what we asked. It and it's ready for the school year, so which is really exciting. Um because they, one of the specific things that kept on coming up in the SOP process was. Have one app district-wide. I can't stand that I have to get this app for my kid in this school and this app for my kid in this school. And then even if I have two kids in one school, it's two different apps for different classrooms, so.
So this will be, so teachers won't use. A separate thing, it'll all be in here consistently.
Yeah, it bene- it it benefits all of us in so many different ways um. I'm just thinking from the um. From the framework of information act, uh request, public records request perspective, like we have record of everything that is communicated through here, so. It's all in one spot.
Any drawbacks and concerns or just it's all, next thing we had is really great?
So so far, um teachers are concerned when they log in for the first time. Um and I've, I've started to address these concerns with teachers and I may have sent out an email to all, but I don't know. I'll check on that. When they log in for the first time, they notice that a phone number is associated with their account. And they don't want like families to see their personal phone numbers, understandably. Um that remains hidden. It's only, again, it's pulling from Power School um from the staff. Profile and saying like basically like just confirming like that you are this person. And also it's, it's parent squares way of sending, like when we have a snow day, that. Teachers will get notifications through parents where as a text, however they prefer, whatever they've set up their notifications. That's been the drawback, that it doesn't say automatically when you set up your parent square account as an employee. This, we're confirming that this is your phone number and we will, we will not make it public, so.
Building on that, what? If the parent was asking. About that same question, what is public, like what? They have their profile, whatever, yeah, it's just, but any or is it not even that?
So. You can see how at the bottom it says hidden and hidden. Um for my email address, you would just see, yeah, you would see my name, my picture, that I'm at the district level and then my title. Um parent square. As part of their agreement, agree is never to sell contact information, um so. You know, it it truly will. It will remain, I, I can't say it will remain completely hidden because what if there are hackers? But it will remain as hidden as our power to that, like for example, because this information is in Power School, so. But it's nothing more, excuse me, than name, position. Um it would be a phone number that's associated with it and also it's your. It's the MPS email address, so it's not personal email addresses per se.
Mike, do you have any comments or anything?
It's been great working with Jesse rolling this out. This is a product that I've heard lots of victims about. Uh colleague in Meriden. Said they talked to her, talked about a lot of things. They were getting ready to roll it out for COVID and then COVID hit and they rolled it out real quick and. Real smooth. And it's gonna, as Jesse was saying, you know, we've had issues with communications and now it's all, I've been wanting that. Individual staff accounts, we can't do anything.
You can't.
So some of the other communication tool staff would send up their own account that we have no access to. So we have access to, so something happens inappropriate between teacher and parent, we have that still.
So is there a policy we afford that staff wouldn't, would no longer do that?
We've stated, um I, yeah, it's not policy, but we have stated that going forward, like this is the.
Well, there actually is a policy, because um. Under our technology usage, if it's, it's supposed to be district approved, and so. Some things were not district approved, hence. Not having access to it. So this thing that.
Do you respond to um Facebook? It was brought to my attention, some, some, there was a posting regarding something about um that, was everyone notified about parents where?
We do not respond to Facebook comments. I respond to messages sent to our, our district's Facebook account. Um I respond to email, phone calls, text messages. I do not respond to Facebook comments.
That's fine.
I, I do know that, and I, I talked with Mike about this earlier today, that I have gotten emails from several parents who said, hey, I never received a. Parents Square invitation email. To which that means that they need to update their contact information in Power School. So I'm going to be sending out another blast and and uh put it up on our website or uh social media account that. If you're not getting this, there's two, I, we're gonna go the route of update your uh Power School information first. And then there is another way that they could just sign up and get into their own accounts.
But you want them to.
I want, they, they need to update their contact information.
Or then not just email, any day.
Right, right.
It has to be updated.
That could fall under your, that pillar when you start working on communications. With parents as partners, that, that in doing things like that, updating, that that does help in in other ways, like. It's not just, you know. I'm not gonna bother, it's supporting the school by doing that. Any questions for Jesse? Thank you. I feel better.
I hope so too. I hope I don't end up with.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. All right. Grab the school date?
Yeah, so uh. We are moving and shaking. Getting back to school um. Staffing is looking great as we are. Getting our staff ready to back to school um. Our back-to-school fair is this Friday. Um from eleven to two. We had an overwhelming response of donations, so two thousand stuffed backpacks have been donated. Um close to thirty vendors will be participating um and community uh organizations who have. Signed up, um will be outside. In front of beam in by the, the bus loop. Um and um. It's, it's gonna be a great day, um and so. We've been marketing and I, I know some of you has forwarded the flyer on, on your Facebook, and so thank you. Um last year, it was. We had over three thousand people go off the whole. And so we've learned from the trunk of treat that every year we get more and more people coming, so we're expecting more people to, to come, so we are ready. Um to welcome the families um and community uh on the back-to-school fair. And so. That will be this Friday. Uh the sixteenth. Convocation is right around the corner as well, that is the twenty-eighth. We start at. Eight-thirty in the, uh eight-thirty in the morning at the high school um gym. That's all district employees will be there, um and then um. We kick off the day, it's, it's um a great day of excitement. You know. Sheila and I will be welcoming all, all of our employees. Please join us for that day, a lot of festivities and. It's like a huge pep rally, the, the staff and employees. Yes, Aquino will be um coming um. Dr. Sips, um who's nas- uh nationally uh and world-renowned guest speaker. And so um. He'll be, he'll be joining us. And so um schools are being set up as we speak, so we have the three PD days all set up. The first day, um we will be following the same kind of format. Um the first day is actually a day giving back to teachers to set up their classrooms. You know, um build community, get some new staff, there's new staff in their buildings. Um we invested in a new um. Uh platform for the mandated trainings. We are excited about that, uh about this new platform, because it. It, it, it's a lot of work to keep track of the mandated trainings, because every year there's a, a one or two. Mandatory trainings added. Uh this actually allows us to actually keep track of the training, so. And let's say uh Sheila took uh, you know, the. Bloodborne pathogens this year and she doesn't have to take it next year, it records it, so you don't have to take it. Next year, but I have to take it because I'm new, so it keeps track of the cycle. And it's not dependent on a person keeping track, which is great. We don't have to up, print and upload our certificates. So um we're, we're. Hence, it was, it actually saves time and we can give time back to our staff to work on planning and so forth. Um our day two and three um is focused on um instruction. Um and um Dr. McCann, her team have and and. Basiana and have, I have it all planned out. A, a lot of it is, is focused on the new curriculum, but also the department heads meeting with the departments. Will be focused on, on those days and inclusive of also convocation and then we welcome back our kids. Um the little ones and the big ones, um all on uh the twenty. And on the twenty-ninth, um we will um be at schools. Um I, I always ask. Which principals are really grateful. Um we always um, in central, we were always assigned to a school to help them with bus duty. Um it's often because you know, the other ones all excited and nervous, getting on the bus, off the bus, in the bus and so forth, so. We up them with the buses and, and cafeteria in the morning and so forth, so. And uh we start kicking off uh um school year. Enjoying that week. Any questions?
Um on those day two and three, are those um. Is that happening within your, your own school? You're not going to one new place, you're gonna be with your own school? Or your own brother? No, I mean, so if I work at formal school. On day one, on day two and three, am I going to formal school with my colleagues at formal school and learning about your curriculum or seeing department heads, or am I going? Like to, and make jazz and raw going in every direction?
Oh, okay, so um. So some of, yes, they go to their local schools, the, the secondary, um they will, they will be with their department. Depending on content. But the local schools will, the, the elementary will be at their local schools.
So as much as we talk about setting the tone for the kids. Um how are you, how are you then setting the tone? For yourself, so that you, you know, welcoming, but then also bringing them together as a cohesive group in each school and then. And allowing them then to be able to set that tone for their students.
So I start with the administrators at the admin retreat and then I set the expectation around. You know, um first going over the weekend, right, and allowing them to. Um welcome their staff and, and set the tone, the expectation. And reminding them that the first. Few days of schools is not to really, you know, you know, hit the books and, and. But with page, you know. One hundred and seventy-four, but more about building relationships, connecting with the students. You know. And, and setting the tone for the building and allowing the teachers to do the same thing. Uh routines, you know. Just checking in with, with the students and, and, and. Learning what happened over the summer, you know, we have students who. You know, might have had some type of trauma over the summer that we need to check in and, and, and get to know. And. That would allow our teachers and staff to also plan for the, for, for the year. And so forth. At the same time, that would be part of my messaging to all staff at the convocation. Around, you know, as the buses roll up, you know. Bring the students on, on the, on the buses and being, being visible before they get on the buses and, you know, good morning, welcome back and so forth. And, and, and those, those small wins that go a long way. And setting those, those tones. Are going to be key. For our students, but also our faculty, right, and knowing that, you know, I think one lesson, one, one thing that I learned last year. And I know. My team is here, that, that went a long ways when, when I visited a lot of the schools. The response I got back from just giving that one day back to teachers and staff. Was, I, I was eye-opening. And, and the thank yous and, and sometimes the emotions of just saying. You know, that one day of just allowing me to set up my classroom. And, and, you know, and so. Setting, just giving time back, set that tone. For allowing them to just connect with, with their own folks at the local level, went a long way, and so. But also explain some of these changes that are gonna be beneficial for them. To support them um in their classrooms and in school. And sending that message as well, it's gonna be key.
So will it be consistent district-wise throughout every school as far as what we're all will be?
Yes.
As far as um bringing the students on board and that. You know, this day and this day you'll be doing this and this day, and then we're gonna finally get on board as really, you know, the academic piece after so many days?
Yes.
I, I think to your point around giving that date to the um, to the teachers. What you do, you prioritize them, which they all know still prioritize, you know, you know, years ago was before you did that. It was you did all the other things and then, oh, you have a happy day, that third day. You know, the morning was with your staff and then the afternoon they could get their moves set, so they're not lasting where you're flipping first, so I think that's right, good thing.
And we end the communication with them going back to their buildings with a brunch. You know, teachers and staff, they all go back to the buildings. And you know, factor those with, with a brunch, so. So it's gonna be exciting.
Are there any changes as far as back, is there something being done differently um? You know, as far as, you know, something that you've. Like in the past year that came up, for instance, the back of the Milton High, is there any changes that are gonna make that easier? Like in the past year that came up, for instance, the bat, of Milton High, is there any changes that are gonna make that easier? Um, that are gonna be put into place, or are you still working on stuff like that, or are there other schools that might have had something that? You know, came up to the board in the last year, so to do as admin, that maybe you're, um, looking into streamlining or. Or changing so that it's, you know, the process is better, or we don't, we have less issues?
Um. No, I mean, I mean, uh, a change, I mean, for the high school would be the bells. Um, that was a change, it was a last, that'd be, that'd be a a full implementation, the bell system. Um. We are looking at the advisory at the high school, that might not be immediate change, but I mean. That would be something that might happen in the fall, either breaking advisory up. Or changing where advisory lands, um. Because what we learned from Beaman is moving advisory to the, to the beginning of the day. Was the win. Um, for Beaman, because it allows a kind of a, a check-in. Before the middle school starts their day, um. And we saw success with that, um.
That seems like an obvious, and I don't know why we don't have more room at the high school, and I think just calling it that name, home room. It lets the kids know that's, that's their place in the school day, and that person is their person. And I just think that that makes a world of difference for kids.
Now, I don't know how long your advisory lasts or what happens in it. I can tell you from experience, when we made it the beginning of the day, it was written by. The kids that thought that advisory was useless just came in, we gave them the excuse to come, but we ended up with huge.
When, when you moved in the beginning of the day?
Yeah, yeah, just, just letting you know.
That's good too.
That's something you don't even think about.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was bad. You know, even the good kids were coming in.
Well, in that respect, the policy of tardiness. Anything else?
Now, that concludes my.
Anyone else have any questions around back to school, or anything that came up during this year that maybe we wanna see about? Remedy or changing or making better, different? Bathroom. Yeah.
Right, that got better at the end of last year by use of Sala, which was our, um. Student turn location tapping in, you would have supervision there, right, the comments I received and students. About being able to go into a clean place, and I thought that that worked well, I think, last year, several of the students.
Do we still have, like, all the bathrooms available? Right. Are they all open, or is it just like one on the floor coming around?
There's only two, two sets on each.
So are they all open?
But it'll be open, all, are the, what, what I'm asking is of all the bathrooms. For the students, in the school, gonna be open.
So they're not, they're not open?
They're not.
They're, they're locked, and that's for safety reasons. Um, because when we've had issues, when they're open, then the students just go in there. Either destroy bathrooms or we had, we had safety issues.
Oh, yeah, another issue, and that is, if you don't have people available. Okay, this is what, I'm not wearing my board of vehicle, all right, I need to wear my usual Friday hat. And I would make that very known to everybody. The lines can be long, because people are waiting to go to bathroom, I've seen. Um, kids trying to find a bathroom. And coming up to me and even asking, do you have the key to the bathroom? No, I don't have the key to the bathroom. Sometimes there isn't anybody, um, sitting there at the, at the, at the desk. You know, so you got, you know, they're running around, they, let's tell you, I've been to the third floor, it wasn't open. I've been downstairs, it wasn't open, you know, and they're looking to use a bathroom, and, um. At one time, there was a sign or a sign mark, but there was a lot of blanks on there, and there wasn't nobody in the hall. So I just told them to go knock on, on one of the classroom doors and ask the teacher to open the bathroom, you know, because if the, uh. Second floor, if the, um, office there with the ladies out to lunch or something. You know, they can't use the bathroom, so that's why I'm asking about for the kids, you know, about the bathroom thing, because. Not all kids are there.
Sorry?
Not all kids are there, and I understand what you're saying. Um, I understand what you're saying, that because of the, all right, they go in there, they vape, they might fight in there. And, you know, they destroyed the bathroom, they wrote on the walls and stuff, but they haven't tore the. Um, I'm not sure, but what I'm gonna say, I, what, what I'm saying is, not to my knowledge, have they went in there? Have they ripped the toilets up and taped the sinks off the wall? I know some of the things that they do are bad, but then I worry about them when they have to use the bathroom and they can't, then they hold it. Till they go home, and then are we doing more damage, um? Because of the, you know, they got, they're waiting till they get home to go to the bathroom, um. I think that it should be. We had to. Things start at home, but sometimes kids just ain't gonna have. And I just think that maybe we should try and give it a chance, you know, um. I maybe opening up not just one, maybe two, or either we have to find. People that are going to be in that hallway all the time, so kids can go to the bathroom, because it just, to me. Look, it just don't seem right, you know, you can always wash the walls. You know, uh, we can't stop kids from vaping, we can't, there's no way, and they, they don't find ways. That if they did go in there, they know what to do, and I'm not saying it's right, but what about the other kids that are being punished? And that's what it looks like, because they can't use the bathroom because of those people, these are not gonna always. Tell on other kids. Or nothing like that, but if you got, like you say, you tap them in, and you gotta stand in a line. And only one at a time, that can be a long time, because, like, you know. We are bodies and stuff, and people could be in there for a long time, they ain't got the line getting on the people running around trying to find another bathroom, and then they gotta go to class. And sometimes they get, you know, the teacher, they, they've been out there just playing around or something, and they're not. And this is, you know, I, this is my opinion. They're gonna be, well, some of the kids are gonna be going to high school, I mean, going to college, and they don't have that in colleges. And then again, I look at it too, is, I used to work for the state, I used to work for CVA, we had badges. We had a, a man, you had to use a badge, you had to go to your unit, you had the badge, when you came off of that. Unit, you had to use your badge, everywhere you go, you had to use a badge, if you use a bathroom outside of the unit, you had to use a badge. But this is different, because that is a, a job. I just, I'm just voicing my opinion, and I just feel like we need to give them a chance. To see what happens, and, you know, let's just gradually, gradually do it. Hire some people to sit out there, in that hallway, we, we know that our teachers. You don't have a whole lot of teachers that you gotta overabundance of, because they got to teach, they got to teach. So let's see if we can find some money and hire some people to sit out there and do that. Monitor, they used to do that, the Woodrow Wilson High School, at the time was Milton High. Parents used to sit out there in the hall, and. Like I said, I understand where you're coming from, and personally, I just said, we need to get these kids a chance to start to. Treat them like they are kids, not prisoners, like I said, disbehavior, they're modeling it because of what they see. On TV, they, what they be watching, you know, or hear, music they listen to, but like I say, it all starts at home. We're not gonna find those who are responsible for, because they don't like, I'll say, unless we got him or something. That's all I got to say.
I appreciate that.
You know, I mean, you know, I'm not saying what you're doing is wrong, I, I think it's time that we just, let's just try it, literally at a time. Let's see, you can always do whatever, you know, you can continue to do that, tap all you want. Okay, but just let's give these kids a chance, I think it's been almost a year. You know, it's been almost a year, and we just don't, I mean, shit like this, you wash walls, we can replace the dog on toilet. You know, we got the thing up there, smoke detector up there, what they doing there, they going there vaping the thing. So that the smoke, all that smoke don't go with it, that's what they do, now, I don't know about y'all. See, now I got in the talking, I need to shut up, I'm gonna tell you right this year, but now you're gonna see the real me, I went to high school. I went to Milton High School, then you two Milton High Schools. First one, we used to be out there smoking right there, they had a smoking room, everybody didn't go to class, we sat out there. You don't talk about, okay, we don't talk about it, all right, then, they decided. They get rid of that dog on old Milton High, which is now Senior Citizen Place, huh? Yeah. I went to the second Milton High School, which, the third Milton High School is built on part of the old, of the oven, right? Let me tell you something, I'm not an innocent person. I used to be in the bathroom getting drunk, it was like me and my friends, that's what we used to do. We used to have parties, you know, they used to have the dances and all of that, they were in it, okay, if you got high. You didn't get high, of course, you didn't get high at the school, but you just walked outside and went around the corner, and you got high. So that's what we used to do, or you walk straight down, front line, all the cars apart. Going down a couple rows and you sat in the car, so it's, it's not like these kids are doing anything really different. Than what they did in my day, you know, so, you know, we don't think we ever wrote on the walls or nothing. But we were about fun, and yeah, of course, you weren't supposed to do it, but you did, and we can't act, expect kids. They act like adults, when they really can't act like adults, because you're not there, all right? Now, I done told you about this, I want y'all to think about this, all right, really think about it. Right? So we all ain't innocent. No, you ain't got to share, but I know, I can, I can just tell, y'all, y'all sit up there and think about this day. You know what I'm talking about, you know, it's just, it's like, no, we live it. You know.
So the way we currently have it, if if one bathroom on the floor is open, and then the line forms, so how much teaching time would kids lose in there? Or how long are they waiting to use the bathroom?
It depends.
That be situation, and can we do something about opening all the bathrooms, and think about how we do it?
I, I think, ob- obviously, when I'm here for the board, it requires, we need to be business.
You have to think about the kid who, there, there are kids that don't wanna use phone restrooms, first of all. And then there are kids, and then they get somewhere they have to, because they're there for six hours, so then. Then they have to go stay in a line, or it becomes such an issue, I just.
And and to board member old, uh, point, there are times that there is a line, because I've been there, and I'm, I'm. I opened the doors.
Yeah.
If they're asking, you know, Dr. V, you open the doors? Yeah, but I, and I stand outside waiting for them to, to finish, and, and then everyone comes to my side. And to break up the line, and so, but there are times, yeah, there are times, even dated, the line does get, get long. Because there's only one person who's assigned to that bathroom, so that, that is, that, that, that does. Um, so it, I think it, it, it requires to go back and and as, and assess.
Yeah.
Is the policy to let one person at a time, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Some, and I, I, I step in the cafeteria, the cafeteria, because there's more, there's more adults. In the cafeteria supervising, there, there's. Um. They're allowed to go. All in one room? Yeah, four, three, in cafeteria, yes.
I have a good question, it seems like the reason that we're locking bathrooms is to stop people from fighting, vaping, and vandalizing things.
That's correct.
I don't know when we started, but did you see a significant drop in those types of things, like, do you feel like it's working, people really aren't vaping in school now?
Um, it, in, and we, we also put vape sensors, and yes.
Now, do they have to use their ID to swipe into the bathroom, or they?
So, so they use it, um, they use, so in the past, they had a hall pass.
Mm-hmm.
A paper hall pass.
Yeah.
So now they, they tap in, um, with their IDs, so using the hall pass.
So if even allowing three or four in at a time, at least you know who's in there during that time, so if something happens, okay?
Correct.
Is it still locked though, or is, or is me tapping giving me access to it?
No, the tapping is, tapping just elim- eliminates the hall pass, so we know the student that leaves the class. And knows that they're going to the bathroom and not someone else in the building.
Dr. V?
Um, yeah.
How are you guys? Um, great questions and everything, and I apologize for not being there in person, but I do have, um, a question. I was, uh, told a couple times that in terms of the after-school detention. That there's somebody that sits there in the afternoon, but. The person was saying that no one ever shows up for that detention, and I'm trying to think about accountability, like, how many detentions? Would you have, like, after-school detentions during the week, and is it true that nobody ever goes there? Or is held accountable, I, just curious. Yeah.
I've heard that before, yes, um, I heard that actually, uh, in May. Um, the individual who holds, um, after-school detention brought that to my attention.
Okay.
And I did speak to Dr. Brooks about it. Um. And so, her concern was about transportation, and then we said there is transportation. And so, we, we can't address it, but we also started to talk about it, I think, earlier in this meeting, uh, board member Britbo. Um, that I, I need to check in both in the middle school and the high school to kind of make sure that we start the year. Um, with a level of accountability around, um, detention.
Yeah, I heard a little bit of that, but I really appreciate you answering it, that, that helps me a lot, thank you.
Anything else? Well said, going to action items. So policy number five one three one point eight two, use of privately owned technological devices by students, this is the first reading. So we would want a motion to move it forward in a second. And the second. Any discussion around it? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Little extensions, motion carries. So we already, uh, excuse me, at the end of the month, um, next policy is, excuse me, by one one four. Student discipline is the first and final reading, um, so we'll need a motion to carry that through, um. And it would be as outlined with the change that we made around transportation, so, so I'm on for that.
Motion to carry it through as outlined with the change about transportation.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppositions and extensions, and motion carries, okay, the last one is. The last one is, that's our first and final, so that one's all set to go forward, so that'll be posted. Last policy is four one one nine, a personal appearance, first reading, this is for our staff. So a motion to, I don't think we did anybody from this, so a motion to move forward on this one. Adam, a second.
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 Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Gins, motion carries. We do that one again. Well said, any other things, you really can't wait, any other things for these special audience? All right, I will adjourn. It is seven thirty seven, thank you all so much. Really appreciate your time, especially during the summer. She will love to see how the attention we committed to that I didn't put, I believe it's the twentieth. And we'll do it remotely because it just.